This is like a dog and pony show.
I would like to hand this to you, four lines, as one of these speakers here. Remember, I would ask you to please be courteous and keep it to three minutes. Over to the right here, the official that has noticed you, we have 30 seconds left, 15 seconds left, when your time ends, and I would like to let you know that that has reached that time. And I appreciate your cooperation. Everybody's on this side, all sides, and I'll go back and forth. Also, please state your name and address for the record, so we can learn from each track. Before we go, quickly just to check them out, to see our professionals watching this recording for the first time, so we're going to give some answers from that, basically, while we're recording, because we're seeing this evening before we formulate a lot of vision ourselves, but any other comments? Just, just call.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Obviously, the goal here is clean air and water. Based on the presentation, and thank you for providing that presentation, it appears that both solutions are going to take about the same amount of time. If you truck it out, it takes 16 months. Based on the start date of the capning solution, it takes 16 months. Please answer my next question. That being said, if both solutions were both $7 million, would you have chosen the same solution?
Next question.
I really can't answer.
Can't hear ya.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
It really was never discussed.
Well, the 16 months that I had discussed for the removal of film, that was just for the removal of film, and remember, once that's done, there still needs to be cover soil on that on top to then cover the exposed places. So, 16 months isn't the end of the solution, and that's the end of the availability of the solution.
Thank you, please. Any other council comments? I see none at this point. Time a little bit into the public, and I'll start on my left here, and again, this gentleman over here will have flashcards, but I'll try to find out.
My name is Clay Stadmore. I'm at 49 Mountain Road, Ledwood, across the street, just down the town from Big Hole in the forest. For sure, what the most prominent problem we've had there is the gas. But the other problem, which I don't recall hearing at all addressed tonight, was the heavy metals and other contaminants that are leaching into groundwater and flowing into the surface water. It seems to me that some of the assumptions that were going on, that we heard about here, the consultants only asked about what do we do to solve the hydrogen sulfide problem? Why wasn't the other problem addressed? And we, I think I also say that some assumptions were made, you know, I don't, I think I speak for everybody in this room, we've been very happy to suffer through, nobody was concerned about the trucking on the way in, asking us what we could do. Only the aspects that they're concerned about the smell on the way in, I'm sure everybody in this room would be willing to put up with just as much smell and just as much trucking to make sure the job is done right. But I understand why, and I think you made some very bad assumptions as to the weight of the things that were considered, so why were the heavy metals and other contaminants ignored in preparing the solution?
They weren't ignored.
I didn't hear it, sorry.
They are being addressed, but they weren't the primary cause, because you have to remember, we got onto the site by the issuance of emergency orders that made the owner wrong. That's our authority, that's our primary purpose. All right, now, the remedy that we've chosen to implement will address hydrogen leachage simply because it's an impermeable cap that will keep the rainwater out of the material and put back into the chamber.
On this mountain, rainwater isn't the only water, this is a very wet mountain.
Yeah, we're only dealing with the S and P material, and all the S and P material is above the water table, so none of that is in the water.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff Fiddle, Director, New Jersey Sierra Club. I just wanted to start off with a little statement. I think you should have had this display online earlier, so people in the audience and others could read ahead of time and prepare. I just hope we don't call it a dog and pony show in this call. I also want to start out and say, going through this, I believe that with consultants, it's garbage in, garbage out, in this case, it's garbage stays, because it's the cheapest way to deal with it, not necessarily the best way to deal with it. Serious concerns about your closure plan, because, one, you do not deal with high level groundwater or streams that run through the site, which will mean that there will be moisture building up under that cap and more gas. But more importantly, that the geomeshes are putting down can fail, they can be punctured during installation, they crinkle, they do other things, and they don't necessarily work. If you wanted to cap this site properly, you'd have to bring, you'd have to build a slurry wall out of betonite, because of the groundwater, put in an AD chain, a collection system, as well as a gas collection system, put in blue clay with a better lining system, but then it'll cost as much to haul it off-site, so you're actually taking the cheapest way to cap. You know, our governor pulled out a raging because he didn't believe in cap and trade. Well, this is a cap, and the trade is, you're trading away a neighborhood with more pollution. You add up their closure plan, which is not really a closure plan, only three times more trucks take it off-site compared to what they want to bring in. The cost, you know, it's all about cost, it's not about, when you think about regrading the site, drilling all those wells, putting in that gas collection system, it's gonna be a lot of disturbance, and they'll be releasing gas while they do all that construction as well. So, if you think about it, long-term, best solution is to move it off-site, and in the long run, it'll be cheaper, because you try to cap it right, you can cost almost as much money. If you move it off-site, yes, there'll be disturbance, and I disagree, and we'll work on the numbers, on the 16 months and the amount of time it would take. The cost is probably about right, but look, this was a mess that was created, this community is suffering, and, you know, quite frankly, this was meant to be trucked off-site.
You bet.
The excavation to remove the materials using a cover, it works, and you can do temporary grading, it doesn't have to be a perfect seal, and actually, it doesn't work is a better way. We, you know, we have seen throughout New Jersey, wherever we've capped sites like this, eventually, they will fail, and I think, we don't want this to fail, we want this to be successful, we need to move it off-site. Thank you.
Okay, you had explained to us that...
Please, your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paris Palace, Reconna Street, 7th and Sun. You had explained that there was a Florida site that cost about $8 million, a little bit less acreage than ours in two yards of waste, so why is ours 38 million and theirs resulting in like 8 million? That is far, as far as I'm concerned. Next, you know all about solid waste, you know how it breaks down. This stuff is gonna be around for hundreds of years. You're going to have to deal with the problem that you're trying to create a solution for for years and years and years. Personally, I think this town deserves to have a solution fixed. 16 months is not much, 38 million dollars is not much, to help protect this community, which is 20,000 people or more.
Hi, my name is Governor Nance, this is Montconville Road, and I have two questions. One is, you said that the Pepe Field in Bloom, or the problems that there was methane, that there was nothing, and that there's no methane here. I want to know, has Cor Sandlin been done, because supposedly, the DPD has prevented the town from taking, doing any environmental testing, even though in the emergency order, the town had all the rights to go in for testing, and if no Cor Sandlin was done, how do you know what exactly is in the landfill? He said 54% was CPS, but within the rest of the 46%, and what was disturbed underneath that? And my second question is, I got up at the Long Hill Meeting, and Governor Christie said that this would take 20, 30 years, it would be done in less than 10 years. Can you give us an actual timetable of when everything would be done? Because I don't think, I think if it's two years to get this out 100%, we'd rather put up two years than within a definite amount of time, when we don't really know if it's even gonna work, as Mr. Trump said, it could break down, so those were my two questions.
So, your first question related to the methane in the field?
If there's been, Air Force, I'm sorry, if there's been, Cor Sandlin, what's in the landfill done?
Sorry. Cor Sandlin's, have we field handled this?
Mar landfill.
Of, of, if there's any, you said that there's no methane, how do you know there's no methane? How do you know there's no methane already in the house?
Methane migrated to homes, and the S and P material is physically separated from many of the homes around it, so it doesn't, there is some methane in the S and P.
Not answering the question.
I can't hear you, something?
It's just not, there is methane in the S and P material, but it's not migrating to any home, because the S and P material is physically separated.
Doesn't that create the danger of fires, especially if it's caps and dry over time? Is there a fire danger, I mean, other landfills have gotten fire, and those fires reach for years, so?
Well, there isn't really a danger of fire, per se, because the gas generator being generated in an environment that doesn't have the oxygen. So, you're not, you don't have that fire hazard, because you don't have the oxygen. It gets more complicated than that. Let me get to your second question, which was related to...
Answer the first.
No, can you, I can take complications, if you can answer that, continue to answer that.
Now, one of the things Tom raised was, the reason we shut down the gas collection system is because you were excavating in and around, you would introduce air into the collection system, and that could create a flammable situation in the gas collection system, because you're adding extra air to the hydrogen sulfide. That's just, the other instances of where there's a potential for a fire, but that's why we take precautions of not doing that.
So, there'd be no chance, or there's some chance, you just don't know what it is?
I'm sorry.
So, there'd be no chance of anything happening with the methane that's there? It would just be...
Well, right now, you don't, we don't see a fire hazard related to the gas. Certainly, the material, we covered the material on the positive shelf, which is a cement-based material, so there's no fire hazard associated with that. We do have, we do have some organic matter, but mostly just built material, but hopefully not to stay wet, I don't think we're going to have any hazard.
I'm sorry, I can't remember, did you just say, "hopefully not"?
Yes.
You have to understand that what this town is in, and hopefully not, so...
It's a moist material, it's a wood-based material, so obviously, somebody could vandalize the 75.
Lightning strike.
That's all.
And I'm sorry, I have two questions.
Mr. Nance, we're trying to give everybody an opportunity here, if there's more time than... You have to be furious every year, you have to shut down this event, you have to have your speak again, after everybody else has had a chance to speak.
But I already asked it, so why do you want me to say that?
Get out the floor, let it go.
I didn't ask you.
I have to.
We all agree.
Would you maybe just answer your question?
My second question was regarding timeframe, it doesn't, it seems to be very open-ended as to how long this will take, and I just want to make sure it's not gonna be 10, 20, 30 years.
Oh, how long is it gonna take?
Everything's done, it's a beautiful grass field, and there's no more rain, so I mean...
Well, after, after the incremental cap is installed, the material will start to dry out, and as it dries out, the ability of the bacteria to create the gas is gonna diminish. That will take a matter of years, I don't think it's gonna take 30 years, it's gonna take a couple of years, obviously.
Couple of years? I'm sorry, a couple of years?
Well, it'll take a couple of years, experience that Warren County land at all. It took about 70 years for air hydrogen sulfide to drop down to a point where it was...
70 years.
So, it's a matter of years.
Elliot Ruda, New Jersey Highlands Coalition, and whatever closing, closure operation is ultimately put in place, it's gonna cost the people of New Jersey a lot of money, and several more years that the citizens of Roxbury have to endure this, for what basically is picking up the pieces for a fiasco of a prior operation that SCP partners propose and operate. That plan was approved by DDP, and we spoke, approved strictly by DDP, and it accepted waste that came from DDP-regulated recycling centers. It would be a lot easier for us to accept what you're telling us tonight, if you're going to investigate what went power down, who wasn't doing their jobs, who wasn't looking the other way, because this is not the way.
I don't believe that.
When this happens to our neighbors, and that's what we need to hear, from DDP.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Shannon Cacabella, I live at 32 Mountain Road. You know, first, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say that I'm totally disgusted about the whole way that this process has been handled by the New Jersey DDP, and about the way that the New Jersey DOH has handled my questions, my emails, and my concerns. So, that and this is the report that was dated on February 12. I am stationed for, my backyard is stationed for, I have had the most elevation above the limits for hydrogen sulfide. My family has suffered greatly, we've had to leave our home, we've had to be evacuated by our home, we've had to move our children away, my daughters had to endure tons of MRIs, headaches, and being seen by neurologists. So, I want to know, when will my quality of life be brought back by the New Jersey DDP that has caused this problem? How are you gonna guarantee that dating the 21 more wells that you need for the pipe isn't going to send my daughter back into the hospital? To guarantee the health, the 21 reports that were presented today by these gentlemen, they said that it's so dangerous, that guys up there have to wear suits, that it could be extremely dangerous. What about me? What about my question? Do you have any time to answer? Could you at least tell me, you sent me to Mount Sinai, you sent me to Rutgers, what is gonna happen when this land gets disturbed and this liner gets put in? What is gonna happen to my quality of life?
So, one of the things we're looking to do, to keep your quality, keep you from getting exposed anywhere, we are installing that gas system ahead of time. We're gonna get that in the spring, while the temperatures are low, and the activity at the fill material is at the minimum. That will then be running full blast during the summer months, and we're gonna then get the impermeable liner as fast as possible starting to fall. So, our hope is that we will have substantial control over the entire landfill during this next upcoming summer.
If you don't, will you put me someplace else to live? I had to, I had to leave my home and my well water, I'm concerned about the liner. I haven't, I wasn't able to use my well and my water for eight weeks. Eight weeks it was contaminated. Eight weeks of this smell was so horrific, that we couldn't even take showers or wash our clothes.
All I can tell you about the water sample is the town, the pit sample of water from the sulfide previous.
And I brought a sample to the town, and I brought it, and I don't believe that anybody can deny, I think Mr. Ramses smelled it, that I had hydrogen sulfide in my water.
Sorry, you're a mover.
Every time the levels on heat of four, which is in my backyard ride, I was unable to use my water.
The town, the town has established action levels that have resulted in you probably being notified of certain levels being achieved, that, that, those action levels that the town's established are gonna be in place, and I would imagine that continue to be used during our construction.
So, these wells that you're digging, it's gonna disturb more land, correct?
Yeah, well...
And you have to go down deep, was the presentation, in order to go down.
Right.
So, are we going to have all this smell all over again, that we can enjoy our summer in our homes?
I appreciate it, and I'd like to point out, while I appreciate your frustration, some of the questions you're asking, these gentlemen cannot answer.
But if you're digging into this sample, suppose it's 21 feet?
Those questions, yeah, but I'm talking about housing and things along those lines.
Why can't?
They're certainly just down professionals that aren't...
So, they're gonna disturb the land even more, that's gonna cause me not to be able to use my home and my yard?
Please, I want you to ask those questions, I'm just talking about the elements where these gentlemen are.
Well, who answers that?
Well, that would...
You don't know.
Because the DPD tells me great questions that never get answered. I sent thousands, hundreds of emails to the DOH, and they can't answer my help, they tell me to go to Mount Sinai, they can't help me. So, who is going to help me? That is what I need to know.
When we, when we are out there drilling the wells, we will be monitoring, the monitor in your backyard. If that, if we start seeing an offset of that, we will modify what we're doing, obviously.
Now, the map that you showed, when you showed where you were going to be placing the liner to the highly disturbed area of hydrogen sulfide that was being released, that's about 200 feet now from my home, because that access road, according to the map you did, will be now closer to my home. I'm right there. So, if, I just can't imagine that trucking it out is not an option to get rid of this stuff, that I can preserve my property. The plan, the plan to break it down, is that true? I mean, we're saying, in two weeks, we're gonna start doing this. I thought this was an open public meeting to discuss the process and any other components, if you guys ever shut the door. I really do not know, according to what they mentioned today, this is the first time they're getting their hearing of the closure plan, but it sounds to me, so, Mr. Button, is this the done deal? Is this the only option that is gonna be done? Because if not, I don't know why our questions are here.
Yes, it is the option.
So, it's done.
So, why are we here? My name is Hyman George, and this is a court. I don't...
I'm sorry, there's something yellow behind you, it's trying to let you speak.
Thank you. I don't know, I feel from whatever I hear or whatever was told to us, looked like we zoomed through the options that are better for us very quickly, and went to the option that is good for you. Because, anyway, if you look at, if you look at this solution, it looks like a patchwork. It doesn't look like a solution, because as we know, those things are still there. If there was a nuclear waste in there, and you covered it as many times as you want, okay, I don't think anybody would want to live by that, not even you. So, bottom line is, if you just come and say to us that that's the only solution, and that's it. Now, the other solution, maybe, I don't know if people want to agree to that, but you said that the, you said that the first solution cost about $38 million, right?
The excavation.
Okay, well, maybe if nothing works with this, and it's not a cost issue, maybe the issue is, give us those $38 million, and let us get out of here, because bottom line is, I don't think... After all, we heard that the whole thing came because some people did not do the job, okay? Why do we have to pay for something that other people can do? I think the bottom line is, if, if, if the work is somewhat dangerous to us still, okay, we shouldn't be here, and you should, before we say, you should be here too, if you care about this, okay? You can't just come and give all the technical, technical thing, and things like that, it's okay. I'm, I'm sure that you're using every, every possibility that exists out there, but the bottom line is, we still have to live with this, we still have to breathe, and drink the water, and everything else that goes in this environment, and we didn't even talk about the fact that the property properties are going down. How are we supposed to be willing to recover what we invested in our houses? We can't, and if you're gonna close it, there's no way anybody's gonna pay for that, because everybody's doing all of it, which we didn't know until we did. But the bottom line is, you can't just basically close it and think that everything's done, it won't be done. I suggest that maybe you should go back to your superiors and talk to them about other possibilities, because I don't think anybody here is happy with this solution.
Bill Morocco, Hazard's Drive in Legend. One question I had is why the cost of maintaining this cap was left out of the budget? Essentially, this would, will have to be maintained forever, and we would also have to have groundwater air monitoring essentially forever. You would have to have someone that would take responsibility on the site essentially forever, and that person would have to perform the maintenance, would have to make repairs as needed, expand the system as needed, and also perform inspections as needed essentially forever.
Can I add, can I add your first question again?
First question was, if the cost of maintaining this cap system were not included in the budget, you gave us a capital budget to install it, but not a budget that would be required to maintain it essentially forever.
Right, in the, in the presentation, the phase agreement, which is implementing a long-term treatment system, hasn't been decided yet, so we simply don't know.
But even, even your, even your long-term treatment system, I mean, number one, you're gonna have a cap, you know, that cap is gonna have to be inspected, if there's issues with the liner, groundwater is getting in, it's gonna have to be addressed. Even the long-term treatment option, we're using these metal ions to make sulfur, someone's gonna have to go to the site every week or month and remove a bulk load of sulfur, so who is gonna do that?
Well, again, removing the sulfur, we don't know how much we're gonna be generating yet, we don't have a way of costing that. That's the only reason why we didn't put a cost on, certainly, right?
I think, I think what I'm getting at is, is the bottom line is that, is this... I think what I'm getting at is the bottom line is that this caped system is going to require someone to take ownership of the site. I don't know who that person is going to be.
Right now, it's state of New Jersey.
Okay. And that party is going to have to do the maintenance and monitoring of the system essentially forever and perform needed repairs and needed expansions forever to protect us. I don't want to run out of time, I'm going to move on. The softly field remediation appears you got your numbers off the internet. I actually spoke to the parties that remediated the site and they did remove 220,000 cubic yards. They actually removed 321,000 cubic yards. They went down deeper into the pile and they actually did remove the material including the drywall. One other thing I was disappointed with was when you were evaluating excavating the material, that you didn't consider methods of neutralizing the material sections at the time, using some type of neutralizer chemical, something like Planet Breeze. You know, why couldn't that be done? Also, it appears that not all of the material in the pile is very offensive. Right now, you have nine collection wells. They cover a very small area of the pile. You showed us the overlapping circles of effectiveness. Right now, there's a lot of the pile that's not being sucked out into the mitigation system. So it would lead one to believe that those areas could probably be dug up with very little disturbance and very little issues with the H2S. Again, I think those things need to be considered. I think that the EPA removes more contaminated material than this. They find a way to do it. And the problem is done forever. The EPA involves the community in a lot of their remediations, and I think you need to do the same thing before they go and shovel in their. I think he has a very good point. Which questions were you referring, pertaining to?
I'm sorry.
I think I have an answer. I asked a lot of questions, I think.
But I think everything's been answered.
I like the answer from the D E P on why they evaluated some of those ways, other ways to remove the material. It's not easy, but it seemed like they really dug too deep to find creative ways to handle it.
There are other ways. I did consider that this wasn't just going to be an excavation just with zero control at all. I would expect that they would use things like foam covers, there's material called Bruce Mars, out there, and there are odor control materials that are out there. But once this gas gets into the air, you're talking very high concentrations of hydrogen sulfide gas. It has to become extremely dilute before people are not getting the effects of offsite odors. I think everyone here knows, done studying on the hydrogen effects of hydrogen sulfide gas, it's down to a few parts of her billion is the odor threshold for that gas. We're getting gas coming out of manure, 25% volume hydrogen sulfide gas. It might only be 2% volume hydrogen sulfide gas, but you're having to dilute it millions of times in order to be below that odor threshold. Placing a mask in odor over it or a duct doesn't work. There are materials out there that will consume the hydrogen sulfide gas, but unless they are perfect in what they're doing, you're going to be all the offsite odors. So yes, I did consider the fact that it wasn't just going to be a willy-willy excavation. People were going to take a good effort to try and make it better. But it's still my strong opinion that the folks here are going to suffer greatly among the odors related to trying to extract that material.
I want to take one last point to comment. You have to understand that we have to live with this essentially forever. And we need some guarantees from the New Jersey D E P that if you proceed with your plan, that you are going to spend the money and put the resources required to monitor the site, fix the site, maintain the site forever.
I live at 185 Emmons Road, right at the foot of Boone Mountain. We have our own private well, and like so many others this evening, I'm concerned about the water. I know most of the D E P and the press aren't here because air is something you can smell when it goes bad. But the silent killer to me is what's happening to our water system. I want to give you just the example of my household. We've lived on Emmons Road since 1973. And in that time, three of nine people who lived in that house with us, all unrelated, have contracted very rare cancers. One was a 40-year-old woman who never smoked, got cancer not in her lung, but on her lung, and died. We have another woman in her who was 62, got cancer of the kidney. She also died. My husband had a strange gastrointestinal tumor. He, thank God, is a cancer survivor. My concern is, is this a normal statistic? That three of nine people contract cancer in that period of time? To me, there's something in the water that needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the thermost before, no one drive, Legend, New Jersey. Let's talk facts. First of all, it's not 25,000 trucks to remove that, it's 13,000 trucks. Do the math, I did. Secondly, $38 million, where did you get that figure from? I come up with $15 million to remove it. Okay, now, let's go to details, all right? What are you going to do with the two water streams that are sitting right underneath that landfill? How are you going to crack that problem that you stop surface water from coming downhill into our wells, which are running dry? I know, I have. The second phase, if the water's reaching into the landfill, that means it's going to create netting gas in an abundant amount. Third of all, you're breaking every EPA requirements for capping a landfill. The liner doesn't go on top, it goes underneath the garbage. So it's going to release the garbage and releasing it into the surface water. Then you have your retaining walls. You claim that there's a slope up there. Yes, there's a 45-degree slope with a 40-foot mound of garbage sitting on top of it. Are you going to build a retaining wall to stop soil erosion? What are you, you discuss everything backwards. It's not part of the EPA requirements, it's not part of specifications for this country? Give me an answer. How do you determine this is a better solution than dropping it out? Of course, I have 20 more questions, but I don't have the time.
Answer my question.
This remedy, answer my question, please.
This remedy disturbs the material in the least amount we can possibly can to, so as not to release any of the gases. We are installing a variable loss of gas collection system ahead of the coming summer months.
How are you going to remedy the two streams sitting underneath 40 feet of garbage? How are you going to remedy that?
The, our purpose is to abate the odor.
How are you going to prevent the two streams that are sitting underneath 40 feet of garbage? Answer that. It's penetrating my water system. It's stopping my wells from going dry.
The impermeable liner is going to prevent water from entering the material.
Water's coming through.
It's surface water. Do some research, it's surface water. I thought these guys were biologically inclined to establish a correction for a landfill. It's all on the internet. If you don't want to research it, it's there. Research it. You're doing everything upside down and backwards. You're not doing it correctly, you're not doing it according to EPA, and you're with the circles going around. I can see the water streams on the map that you're putting there. Did you look at it? Did you calculate where it was coming? Did you know about it?
My name's Ken Collins, and I live everywhere. And I have a two-part question. And it has to do with something that was brought up a number of times, and that is a liner. If I were to go out and open up a landfill today, I would be required to basically install a gigantic bathtub that the garbage gets dumped in and covered with dirt every day. And that would have a drain that goes through a collection system. That does not exist in Fenimore. And I would like to know if by what failure of NJTDP was Fenimore allowed to accept the waste that's causing this problem and not have a liner installed even before this waste was accepted? That's absurd. And why do you let that happen? And I have a second question after that.
I will tell you, because we're presenting a plan tonight to abate the opus of the conditions that are there. Ask a question.
That's all you can tell us? That's it?
Where were we here tonight to answer questions? Irving, you are.
Okay, so my second question is, by a show of hands of the dozen people on the stage, how many of you have a pool or ever did in your life? Pool where you swim? None of you have ever had a pool? No, no. By a show of hands, if there are, you tell me you've had a pool. Does your liner leak?
Yes!
All liners leak. The material that's trying to keep dry forever with an impermeable liner that's not made of titanium steel is going to leak. And that material is going to get wet. And if it's there to leak, now it gets wet, it's going to release hydrogen sulfide back into this community. And we're going to be back here again asking you to truck it out, so truck it out.
Paul Roy, 11 Cooper Drive. Just a couple of factual questions. How long is the liner expected to last? It should last a decade.
It should.
Our men, you said it should last, I didn't, decade? Decades? 10 severe, decade?
10 years.
Can you give anything a little more specific? Are we talking like 20 years versus 50 years?
My government is involved in research on the geomembranes. And they were selected by EPA in the 80s, four liners, as the gentleman had talked before, that goes underneath for nuclear anthems, it goes underneath the liner in order to prevent groundwater contamination. The research that was done on the polyethylene that's being used for the geomembrane here, the estimated lives of these are actually many hundreds of years, if not thousands of years. These are very, very dangerous materials.
Did you found them here?
No, they've not been discovered, as I heard. They've not, but they will last hundreds of years because testing has been done where they've done advanced aging tests where they put them under conditions that would be similar to what you expect to rapid engage the material and then extrapolated out how many years that they also have to be put in.
And I just wanted to clarify a comment that you made earlier. This is the plan that the D E P is going forward with regardless of the sentiments and comments that you're getting in this meeting?
That's it.
Well, it's not necessarily regardless, it's a plan we're going with. We're certainly here to listen to everybody. There are issues that you touch, oh, and races that we can't address before.
Yeah, they don't accept your plan.
Okay, but this is the plan.
This is the plan, yes.
One last question. How does temperature drive the hydrogen sulfide? 50 degrees, 60 degrees versus 80, 90 degrees?
Well, the bugs are temperature dependent, so they need a certain range of temperature in order to reduce the gas. So colder temperatures turn them off, warmer temperatures make them active. It's one of the reasons why we're trying to get the gas system in while the landfill is still cold. So, I mean, we have temperatures of landfill raining for 36, 40 east, obviously, the surface was where the smell of ice is down deep, it's in the 90s, 100s. So there is temperatures out there that are detrimental to the gas consumption.
What's the range where the smell starts to come back?
I'm sorry.
What temperature is the smell going to come back where I'm going to be able to smell it again? Is it like 50 degrees?
Well, the temperature already, the landfill is producing hydrogen sulfide gas now. We're collecting it and reasonably controlling it fairly well at this point, considering what it was in the summer. So the temperatures are already there. We expect that during the summer months that the entire landfill warms, that there'll be an opportunity for more gas to be generated, which is why we want to get the gases to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank God. You've ruined everybody's life in this room. You're going to do it your way anyway. You called us here to be a bunch of niggas. You did yourself. If I like it, you might go out, but you gotta wait up. Truck it out of there. You ruined my house. Bring your wife and your grandchildren into my house while you're doing this job and see how many weathered five years it's been. You guys are the best. You come here and ask like, Big Son, you're doing it your way anyway. What are you getting out of that pair for?
This pattern?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
49th Road. I have a house re-divided. I live next door to Shannon, who has an 104 in her yard. My family has been exposed to the hydrogen sulfide gas for a year and a half. Our concerns have not been hurt by the D O H. But last month, they quietly issued a report stating that the daily levels of hydrogen sulfide that we're being exposed to are above chronic health standards. Nobody came here to talk to us about that. Why not?
They don't have a different group. Immoral stuff in our chambers now. Don't you even have a heart?
I'm not, I'm not going to be a part of that.
Of course you're not. What's the brand?
Please, sir.
You don't talk to one another. Governor.
To the point of a few other commenters, there are two streams, surface streams, that used to flow through Fenimore. Are they in your plan? Because I believe that with where the pile is, that they are under the pile now. So putting an impermeable barrier over the top of the pile is not going to solve water penetration issues.
The historic streams.
During the plan, the original closure plan that was presented by S E P took into account two surface streams that we've never dealt with.
I believe one is further north of the site and the other is just on the very edge. I guess it's even there.
Would you bring up that slide in the map again? Let us see.
They're not on our slide.
How many trucks are going out of the site now, bringing out sulfur tainted water?
We do two loads a day, three or four days.
When your collection system is at its highest level, how many trucks will be going out of the site carrying toxic wastewater?
It depends on what concentrations that we receive. So we're doing about... So, we're doing about 30 pounds per hour of sulfur at this point, and that's what we're reducing.
Currently, at non...
Right. So, if new wells generate 60 pounds an hour, it will double.
Yes. And you were very concerned about the number of trucks that we would need to truck out the waste. We're going to be trucking out waste one way or another, whether it's toxic wastewater for 20 or 30 years, or this waste for a year and a half and getting our lives back. Yes, there is. I have one last question for you, because when you took over the site in June, you promised us that within a couple of short weeks that we would not suffer anymore, and yet some of the worst days we experienced were yet to come. Why should we believe you now?
Good point.
Answer that. Answer that. Answer that.
All right, Bert, we are presenting our plan and we believe our professional judgment is going to work.
We believe in people's smartness.
Yes, please. For your neighbors' sake.
Hi, my name is Angela Johnson. I live in the Three Robles Court. My first question is, what are the plans for the rest of the site? The area that wasn't, you know, that the SEP didn't dump additional material out? I mean, because I know I'm very concerned with what's going to happen with the rest of that, will it be allowed to be reopened and more material brought in?
Well, the department is only authorized on the site to address the material that is being brought in, so we are not doing anything directly with the rest of the site. What's going to happen to it is probably tied up in the legal system at this point.
My next question is, I believe you said that it might take seven years? Is that right?
Seven years, I knew it was related to data that we were looking at for the former town and the landfill. Their hydrogen sulfide levels drop up fairly consistently down to what was substantially lower level within about seven years.
So, does that mean we're going to have the smoke stack for seven years?
You might have it sooner, might not have it longer, but that's the function of the rain.
And what kind of monitoring is going to be done to ensure that the H2X and SO2 levels, is it the same monitoring that's being done now, or is the town going to pay for it, or is the DDP going to pay for it? And is there monitoring of anything else to ensure no other gases other than H2X and SO2 are coming out of this guy?
We have done other tests for other gases, and there's nothing significant other than the H2X. So, we are testing, the test we conducted was coming out of Stat Farm is hydrogen sulfide, SO2, sulfur dioxide, carbon dioxide. And that, those numbers tell us that the system is destroying our nine and a percent of material.
Is the goal, though, I mean, is we are going to be exposed, or we already have been exposed, as René said, for climate periods, to eliminate the gas? Because I've seen in...
Yes. Well, our goal, yes, the impermeable liner is expected to capture essentially all the gas that would be here. And we like that in treating, our long-term treatment is going to rely on removing hydrogen sulfide from the gas in a dry room, so to speak, without using oxidizers, without burning. So, we will not produce SO2 in the long-term solution. There will be some methane, obviously, from this material that's going to get through. I'll have to be drastic, but that's pretty much my comparison to the issue.
And my last question is, my last question is, you mentioned that it would be too dangerous to remove the material, there's so much H2X down in the landfill. Do you have a case study or an example where material was tried to be trucked out from a landfill and it couldn't be done successfully? Or is it just based on your...
I've been involved with landfills for my entire career, which is over 25 years. I've never seen hydrogen sulfide gas concentrations this high. Never seen it close to this high. The reason I mention that is because that is the driver, in my opinion, that you're better off seeing it in place than you are, than you are, because there's so much gas and very high concentrations in the landfill. So, this is an insight from my career in regard to the rule of waste with this kind of hydrogen sulfide gas concentration.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Polino, 16 Centia Drive. I have three very simple questions. You stated that the lifespan of the membrane is decades to possibly centuries. How long does it keep the soil dry if there's a tear or a rip?
Obviously, we'd have to repair any tear or ripping.
How would you repair a tear or rip under 18 inches of soil?
It would be complicated because of direction.
So, how long would it keep it dry, the first question? If there is a tear or rip? I'm sorry. How long would that membrane keep the soil dry if there is a tear or a rip?
Obviously, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Second is, in Caesar Shabbos Park in San Francisco is a capped landfill. They're having a hell of a time currently because squirrels and groundhogs are burrowing into the park. And right now, they don't know what kind of toxins are leaching out. So, my question is, is how is the DDP going to keep burrowing animals from going through this membrane? I'm pretty sure they're going to stop.
It would be performed, the inspections of the landfill cap. So, during operation, maybe the cap's inspection, you can see.
But you're not going to be preventing them from doing it. As soon as we discover them, though. My last question is, I used to be, back in the day, a biology major, and one of my professors always used to say, if you have an experiment that's right, try to go walk through it and see how it can be wrong. So, my question to you is, how does this go wrong? Because this is the same DDP who thought it would be a great idea to put a solar corn on top of an old landfill. And fill it with red superstore Sammy Jimson, cleared out of the shore and dumped into our backyard. So, my question again is, how does this go wrong? What's the worst-case scenario?
Like I said, we can only address depending on the world.
Anyhow, if you're interested in toppling, I do want to thank you guys for coming here. I know it's not easy to come up here and see our smiling faces. We do appreciate you guys coming up here and at least telling us face-to-face, so thank you for that. My first question would be in terms of the landfill as a whole. Look, take a step back and look at that. We're just talking about the piece that SEP dumped on. There is 100 acres of the entire site, give or take. Under the wall, is this going to be considered a capped landfill after this long-term plan is implemented? Or is there still going to be those undisturbed bases that, to Angela's point, they're still not going to be addressed and they still pose a concern to the environment and to our safety?
Like I said, we are not addressing the entire property. The actual property is about 100 acres. The old landfill is approximately 60 acres. We're dealing with 19 acres of material in SEP. So, we're addressing a 13. The remainder of the landfill is not going to be addressed by our action. It will remain unfurled, unfloored.
Why?
Well, I guess, is anything that you're doing now with these 19 acres, would that have a negative impact on some of the other undisturbed forces, such as stream encroachment, such as, I know you're trying to do measures in terms of stormwater management, but if you look at SEP's closure plan, for example, I mean, there was some pretty hefty stuff in there, leachage management, which doesn't seem to be addressed here at all. And it's a concern, because it seems like, I realize you guys have the management stuff, and you can only go by what the emergency unit tells you, but, and I think you're with the publicly funded remediation, correct? Is that your, that's your role in the EDFRE?
Publicly funded remediation.
Yes, sir. So, can your, can your department, can your division, just take a bigger look at this whole thing and say, like, let's not just focus on this 19 acres, let's look at the whole thing, because you know what's going to happen 10 years, 20 years down the line? Even if your plan succeeds, we'll be right back to the research and the stuff that hasn't been touched, hasn't been disturbed, and you have the opportunity to deal with it now. I would really urge you guys to take a look at that and see if there's any way that that can be incorporated into your long-term plans, within the guidelines of the law and everything going on on my horse.
It really is tied up in the legal proceedings.
I understand. It's a, it's a, it's a weapon almost. So, my other question is in regards to funding. I've been basing one request in fact where I'd only seen about $4 million being addressed from the Secretary of Medical Closure Fund. Has the DDP secured funding for this entire plan? Or are you still waiting for bids to come back? So, actually, request for funding, is that still an open question? Back to the capital, maybe at Bill's point in terms of the expenses as well, in terms of who's going to pay for this, how this is going to be paid for? My concern, honestly, is you guys are executive, you guys are part of the executive branch, and whether it's the current administration, the future administration, can this whole funding be pulled? And maybe phase two and phase three, and this is going to happen, and here we are, just kind of sitting ducks. So, can you speak to that a little bit?
I can tell you, the department is committed to funding this work, okay? We have various funding sources, primarily it is the Santerio and Co. Contency Fund. But we are prepared to fund this work that we're doing. That said, you know, all funding at the state level can change, but there are no plans whatsoever now that can change funding associated with this. We have commissioners and the governors backing to go through at this point.
Thank you. One last question. Okay, I'm trying to find the question. Very, very good question. In regards to truck traffic, it looks like truck traffic will be part of this planned, part of this long-term plan. I think one of the concerns we have now is the roads are in just awful condition. It looks like you're going to be using mountain road and the previous truck route. Is any funding going to be allocated to the town to help out with some of the paving of these roads? Because you've got to realize, the roads that these trucks are going to go on, whether it's cleanfield or not, they're not really meant to withstand the types of loads that these trucks are going to be bringing and out of them. So, is that something you guys might be able to go back and take a look at, so we can make sure that we can all share the road safely, so to speak?
I'm sure that the town should just go to raise that issue a little bit, so...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to put a public statement, we only had you here for another 30 minutes, so please try to respect people's time. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Mezli. I've been at 30 seconds. And I'd like to address you from the merger group. Were you the same, you're the same merger group that did the analysis in 2006, correct? They had presented, presented that analysis of that land, and now you're going to fix this. You're going to fix this now. Because in that, in that analysis, that analytical data, there's, there's words like "I believe," "moderately elevated," "slightly above." That's not scientific. It's subjective, subjective, self-serving information. And, you know, there's, there's something going on here that most people are missing. Governor, the governor said two weeks ago that when there is a problem, he gets to the bottom, gets rid of people, and talks, gets rid of, gets rid of people and talks to the people. You're talking to us. Do you know what, do you know what being oppressed is, sir? Do you know what it is? Do you know what the meaning of oppression is? When the DP came to this township with my community here, all of these people came there and said, "Don't do this to us." You dismissed us by, by, you dismissed us by, and that's how we were oppressed, okay? This is the United States of America. I want to tell you something. Do you feel threatened right now? Because these poor gentlemen standing here are here to protect you. You were supposed to protect us. Something's really, really, really bad going on. And I want to tell you a problem that I have, because I didn't say to Pledge of Allegiance. And in the time that it took everyone in this room to say to Pledge of Allegiance, I said the R clock. I pray for your souls.
Letting mountain road be 13 now. I want to address the stormwater runoff, being you've already predetermined how you're going to fix this situation. Where are the detention bases going to go? How much are they going to hold? Because I know what comes down that mountain, and it winds right up in my yard and in my well. Now, I want to know where the bases are going to be and how much they're going to be able to hold. That's the 20 acres, it's just going to be running right straight down the mountain.
We're designing for a 25-inch storm, and the detention base is essentially at the bottom of the tow.
Sandy was 100 years ago.
It's not, if you're, if you're seeing aerial photos, the area before this happened, there was an existing pond.
Yeah, or basin.
We're actually going to be uphill of that pond with our new detention base. So, we're going to get...
And you're going to funnel it all down that way?
We're not addressing, we're not doing anything with that one at all. We're going to be working above it.
That's what I'm saying. You've got to funnel it all down toward the base, not down mountain road.
Yeah, it will, it will come out of our detention base.
The basin is on the far side of the mountain.
Right, it'll come out of our detention base and then go overland, because you're just a wetland that's already there.
But the other comment I have is this should be fixed right and not half-assed. And right now, you've got a half-assed mix.
I'm placing that on mountain road. What is the name, what is the name of the person and the position of the person who decided that option three was going to be the option we're going?
It was the decision of the department.
No, the department isn't the person. Who is the person?
The department makes decisions.
Which person is the department? Is it the head of the DDP or is it the underling?
The decision involved, the commissioner asked.
Okay, the decision involved, so is the commissioner the one who actually made the decision?
Excuse me?
Is the commissioner the one who actually made the decision?
A decision was made in a collective manner, the commissioner and the people making it.
Is there anybody in this room who likes option three?
No.
Do you have any who likes option two? Anybody that like option two? My other remarks are directed to the council. I believe that this was able to happen from day one. I recognize the council does not have actual legal jurisdiction, but you're our caretakers. We're electing you to represent our interests. The commissioner is appointed by the administration of somebody who's of your same party. All of you are in the same party, and the state, the state government is all the same party. You're not making enough noise. You're not doing what you're doing. You're not telling what you're doing. It's one thing to call send and boo-boo, that's one person. You should call every single person who's anywhere between your office and Trenton. Every single level of authority of the administration should hear from all of you on a regular basis, and they should know how unhappy you are at every, they should have known at every step of the way here. Now that they're back, they're going to make this again. They've got a timetable that started, said March, that's, that's now. You know, if you're not making noise, evidently you're not making enough noise. You know, if you're not making noise, evidently you're not making enough noise, because they're not paying attention to what anybody in this room is saying, decisions made, they're just here to tell us to depend on for again.
That's right.
You're not happy about that. That's a muddling it on you.
Hi, Mr. Collins. My name is Christine. I live in, I live in, it's Melocore in Ledwood. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about the children. I have a son with asthma. He has experienced a distinct change in quality of life and health issues due to the change in his environment. Your department has done a lot in this state to protect the environment of snakes and bats, but you have failed to protect the attack on our children. This is the town of our children, we come here to raise our children. I'd like to ask you, given the air quality that you're presuming that's going to be here for the next seven years, is my son, who has a chronic asthma condition, going to be able to live in normal life with the air quality that you're going to have here? What about people with gluten allergies who also are affected by it, the elderly? We are not a nation of survival of the fittest. Does your plan satisfy the weakest members of our community?
Yes.
No.
Will you, will you immediately?
We will.
If you truck it out, you're falling more eventually. You have taken our children's childhood. In 10 years, in seven years, my children will be gone. They will be going off to college and high school, they will not be wanting to play outside. What are you going to do? In 16 months, my might still have a little bit of a childhood left. You have taken our children's childhood.
We expect to have a line in place and ask.
And what is it going to look like? Are we going to have three times the amount of smokestacks on our mountain? I did not move to Roxbury to live in Bayonne. This is a residential community. Would you like to live across the street from that? Because I'm sure the guy that lives right across the street would love to sell you his house.
We have the guy. We will be replacing him.
When?
When? My children.
We're hoping when they're the next year old.
In 16 months, my children can play outside again. You're telling me that my kids might not be able to play outside for seven years? My son has had an asthma attack the last three times he's played outside, and you're telling me that the air quality in this town is good? Before this happened, he would have asthma attacks once or twice a year. I have a child who can't play outside in this town anymore.
I can't address, I can't address.
Would you want that for your children?
What I can, what I can tell you.
Would you want that for your children?
What I'm telling you.
Would you want that for your children? Would you want that for your children? If it's not good enough for your children, why is it good enough for mine? You never answered Mary's question. Did you do core sampling of the landfill? Yes or no?
I'm sorry, what?
Core sampling of the landfill. Did you do?
No.
Have you tested what's coming out of that smokestack for other things other than hydrogen sulfide to see what we're being poisoning?
Yes, we did.
Where are the results of those tests that we can see them? Are they public record?
VOCs.
Where? Where? Governor Christie said that you have everything posted on your website. Where is it?
We have it posted, we have it in the town.
Well, can you call the governor and ask him? Because he's said it's all there, on record publicly.
Thank you.
I'm Andrea Holtz. I'm in Nice, Delacore, I'm supposed to be right up at the top of the mountain, though. I would just like us to all stop calling this a spell. The hydrogen sulfide is poison. I just want to build on what that lady just said before. I lived on N G Road for almost 20 years and then moved up to Old Peak, and I was concerned about the dump, I moved out the dump. I had underwater tested, never had a problem, I hadn't tested for heavy metal, so if there was a problem, I can pull out those statistics for any of the people I want to do comparison. Hydrogen sulfide goes into your cells and robs your cells of oxygen. In my house is my 83-year-old mother who has C O P D, my daughter who has asthma, and myself, who have had, I have had constant migraines, they're chronic migraines now, every morning I wake up with migraines. I have spent $750 to put a charcoal filter in every one of our bedrooms, there's three of them, and that has helped somewhat, but yet I haven't heard you extend those to other people or even any kind of assistance to some of these people that have even more gas coming in their house than me.
They should be paying for them.
Yeah, so that's leading up to what my question is. I didn't really see anything up there that said what we're going to do this summer. That's my biggest complaint. My mother has been in the hospital every July, August, and it's due to this dump. Okay, for two years she's been in the hospital, urgent people probably remember me because they come and pick her up and bring her down there. I expect that to happen again. I'm trying to anticipate what am I going to do? I've thought about perhaps going a little bit west, taking extended stay for three months or something, but I want to know what, what's in the plan, because you're not really having anything up there, and as far as your scrubbers, they don't work. I do have an email that I haven't shipped off, you've got 40 PBDs, and you've got 30, you've got, the rates are still up, and the only reason that they're down is because it's winter time, it's cold, and there's no, no oxygen.
Exactly.
We are going, we are going to get a, we're going to make a significant improvements to gas collection system in anticipation of the summer months.
Oh, no, no, not in anticipation. We have no choice. My mother could die in August, okay?
No, we expect.
This is a likely, likely death situation. You heard the lady before, her sons have no problems, we are, we had a solution, we should have been here in March. All right, we still think she'd have been happy. I expect that this is going to be a replay even worse than last year, last August, and I can tell you it's based on what you're doing now and how your scrubbers are not working. I will send you that email, I'm going to send it to you, I'm going to send it out to Chris Rapp as well. But your, your levels are high, the minute the moisture went up, because the snow started mounting, boom, it was up. So don't tell me you put scrubbers up there and they're working, they're not working.
Not mine.
The monitoring data that we've been looking at, once we, once we got control of the gas, even on the interim basis, and we started treating it, the levels went down significantly and upstate. We have, we have had certain, certain instances where we have still had releases of gases from the site. They're nowhere near what they were in the summer.
So I wanted somebody else to answer, but I would like to contribute to questions, where how can you get reimbursement for moving to a hotel in the summer months, and also the air filters for people that have had a charcoal filter?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
We are, the plan right now is to implement a robust gas collection system to address the summer months.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I'm Marie Felix, I live on Conklin Road. And basically, my first question is, as per to the New Jersey D E P regulations, 727-11 for on incinerators, and that's what they are. Did you ever receive an air, air permit for those?
No, we do not have an air permit.
Excuse me?
Why?
Why?
Because we're operating under an emergency order. We have had an air permission people, the value of the situation, and do the same review they would to our department, and they turn it on as a customer.
So wait a minute, so basically, right, I think you're operating on the enforcement act, right? But you never actually did, you know, you never analyzed whether you can run the, what, I guess, incinerated cell, the composition of gases coming out of it? You have no clue?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you do?
Where is the?
Okay, so basically, have we seen that data?
No.
No. No, you have not. The town has requested through the Public Records Act, copied that data, believing that.
Why don't you give it to them? Why does it have to be open? Just give it to them.
Now, now, that's the other thing. I'm a little confused, okay? Because I know that anytime we do something, we go for permits, applications, whatever, there's always a public hearing, right? But instead, legally, and this is what I assume, I came straight from work, thinking, oh, great, we have a public hearing, and what we say today, and you're going to consider that in your decision. But instead, we made our decision, just like we made that decision to open that landfill. But you see, you don't get it. You say that the, that option of trucking it out is too expensive. Are you kidding me? What you really should be doing, you should be buying everyone's homes here. And that's, and that is what I need, okay? Because everyone here should have never been exposed to this, and you know that. So I don't get it. And I know that you say it's, it's not a landfill, that how you opened that, you said it was a landfill closure? So this way you've got around regulations and all? That's bull. And maybe there should be an investigation on the D E P, because I'm not.
Yes, my question is, um, you don't truck it out, and the project you're going to lay out, your hydrogens, going to do that whole program that we spoke about? Your name, sorry?
Chris Call.
You designed that, is that right?
The closure design?
Yes.
That's correct.
And how many places have you put this in, stole this?
How many landfills have you done, worked on?
No, no.
Oh, the cap?
Yes, the cap.
Offhand?
Have you used this program with, the same one that showed us?
C and D sites, how many?
I'm trying to think of them.
No, we don't want to be experimenting before we try.
No, not enough. The approach that's being used here is industry standard, typical landfill cap.
No, it's somewhere else. No, it's.
Please, where?
Yes, I'm going to ask those.
Please, lady has a question.
Well, he had.
What guarantee would you like to give us to do that, break that whole place apart, all this stuff? I mean, what guarantee do you have, this is no door, rather than a truck? We ought to be exploring that in a way, Jennifer.
It is standard industry order for a cap, used extensively all over the country.
On active season, you landfills?
Yeah, it has to be maintained to work, we're permitted to maintain.
In 2012, I was about the closure of the Superfront site in Jersey City, and used the same cross section, same vertical liner with drainage material on top.
How large is that site?
I'm sorry?
How large was that site?
That site was about 35 acres.
Was it on mammal law?
Well, I would just like to suggest that if you view this on score, will you be the ones who decided upon this, or did you have a real meeting? Because if you go now, and all this again, I just need to educate people here, and there's going to be a lot of studying if you want this, and I don't think it's a dummy, I think that we should review this on the quadrants.
It's not.